We'll call the Williams County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, September sixteenth to order. Beth, please call and roll.
Barry?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Bo?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
We have a quorum. We're gonna proceed. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item C is consent agenda. What are the wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item D is public comment. This is the spot in the agenda if there's anyone from the public that has anything they want to address the board with. That's not on the agenda. Now is the time. Seeing none, we will move on. We have a public hearing, the 2026 Williams County Final Budget. The public hearing is now open. Does anybody want to address the board or talk about the 2026 final budget? Second call. Anybody want to talk about the final budget for 2026? Third and final. Public hearing is now closed. Okay. Item F. Beth, it looks like you've got a couple of things on... Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. So, turn it over to the board. What are the wishes on the 2026 final budget?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thanks for catching me on that, Beth. Now, we will go to F. Department heads auditor. Beth has a couple of things.
I'm here today to request your permission to enter into election agreements with the school districts. We already have election districts agreements with the cities. The reason being is according to House Bill 1176, school districts now are allowed to put it on the ballot either in the general elect for the general election for the caps. And also, House Bill number 1482, they're gonna have any type of bond issue, they have to put on the general or the primary ballot. And so, I'm requesting that you let me, with Karen's help, get election agreements with the school districts.
Okay, so you just would like a motion to say you can get an agreement with the school districts for election?
Yes, please. If they have either caps or bonds, that's it. Nothing else.
Does anybody have any questions for Beth?
I would make a motion to approve Beth to get the memorandum.
Election agreements with the school districts.
With the school districts for caps and bonds.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, let's see here. Dennis, I'm gonna skip you and jump to the NDSU Extension.
Just gonna give a quick update on each agent and we'll kinda go quickly because we know you have a lot of things. My name is Blanche Anderson and I am the parent educator with NDSU Extension, Williams County. So, for classes and events that we've, that I have offered or that our office has offered since January, we've had thirty-one classes or events since January. Some of the events have been multi-agent such as bread fair, farm safety camp, special assignment pizza, county fairs. I try to get to a lot of the community events, like kids' day out, community egg hunts, library, school events, job fairs, anything to do with domestic violence or the women's shelter. Some of the most attended classes that I've had this year so far have been book studies, actually on Zoom. And so, one of them was the power of showing up and I had seventeen. And then, what happened to you book study, which was something that we put on with the Prevent Child Abuse in April. And we had fifty-one participants via Zoom. And so, another popular class that we have is positive discipline. And that kinda goes across all ages. Parents with kiddos and then baby signs. I usually do that at the library. And that can be, I think the last time it was like thirty-five babies and parents. So, that's always a good one. Some new trainings that I have attended and been certified in since the beginning of the year, Parenting for Families in Recovery. That's a big one. We're just kinda kicking that off. And currently, we are doing that via Zoom and we have twenty-one registered. And we have requests. I've had a couple of the recovery places in Williston reach out to request some in-person classes. So, we'll get those up and running probably in November. Another one that I've been trained in recently is Positive Indian Parenting. And so, that it reconnects, the program is to reconnect native families with traditional child-rearing practices and culture and modern and kinda tying it all together. And so, I'm working with a couple of different places to get that going. So, some of the things that are coming up are that I'm currently doing, the Power of Showing Up book study again because it was a request. And I'm doing that with Dakota Family Solutions. Parenting for Families in Recovery, as I said, that's online with requests to do it in person. Love and Logic, Supporting Youth with Special Needs. That one I'm doing in person with the Williston Early Educator Alliance. They're taking it for growing futures, which is to keep them accredited. And Positive Discipline classes coming up in October. And then, baby signs at the library again, October and November. So, I'm keeping it short and sweet. If you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out whenever or now. I'm gonna pass it on.
Hi. This is Caitlin Jesperson, a family and community wellness agent for Williams County. Basically, echoing with kinda what Blanche is saying, that we're doing a lot of programming. I've been doing a lot of babysitter trainings and CPR first aid trainings even for the county employees. And upon request, some Stop the Bleed trainings. And I have actually gotten a lot of questions about Stop the Bleed training in light of the recent events and the recent tourniquet use those here in Williston that I offer Stop the Bleed training. And so, hoping to put some more of those on. We're working with the school districts right now, trying to get into their either classrooms or as professional development, offering health and wellness lessons for students and also for workforce development. We're also working on possibly on a mental health program with the library and seeing if we can hit all age groups from children, teens, and adults. Because we keep hearing requests for mental health. We need mental health. And also pushing out our state or national programs that are often web-based. So, there's constantly trainings on suicide prevention or mental health, especially in the egg community. And they're all like free online webinars. And it's just pushing out this information because a lot of people don't even know that we offer all those things online. Also work with, I'm on the multi-partner health collaborative with the state on the wellness committee. And so, really working with them on bringing farm to school and the local produces. And then, also working on relationships, abuse prevention, protecting our children and what we're gonna do about that. And then, I'm also working on the Williston Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm on the Leadership and Education Committee. And so, we're going to hopefully do some small business workshops and also like a lead local, which is a board and board training and things like that. So, develop more leaders in the community. So, that's all the stuff I have coming up.
Can y'all hear me? Okay. Okay. Well, hi. My name is Scott Die. I'm the new 4H agent. I just started a year ago. So, I've been really trying to get to know my community. And I can give you all the numbers for the program, right? I can tell you there's two hundred sixty-six members, maybe fifty or sixty volunteers. But my main thing is working with the community, right? And one of the things that I do is I promote youth leadership. So, for example, this Thursday, there's gonna be a 4H youth member. She's eight years old. And she's gonna be presenting one of her project expo boards, which is essentially kind of like a science fair, but you can do things other than science. She's gonna be presenting at the library and teaching other people how to make rose magnets. So, it's really stories like those that I'm really trying to bring out in our 4H program. And not only that, but just expanding on our existing offerings. Kelly has done a great job as the previous liaison for the 4H program at growing certain program offerings. For example, livestock judging. She's really grown that program to make it so now there's actually a team that gets to travel all over the state. But I wanna offer some more things. For example, one thing I'm planning is something called the Cloverbud Art Auction. So, Cloverbud is terminology for a five to seven-year-old 4H member. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to just get those young ones really engaged with what it's like to give to other people. So, they'll do a workshop and then they will take one of their art pieces that they make. And they'll have it up for an auction. And then, they get to choose a local organization that they'd like to donate those proceeds to. So, for example, maybe something like Mondak Animal Rescue. Really just getting them just thinking about the fact that there's a world outside their own and they can be helping out. So, I've really just started just trying to get to know the community, who's in the area. Because I've only spent a year here, but there's so many people I have yet to know. And my main objective is really just connecting with each club and making sure that we have those youth members that want to express leadership and really bringing those stories forward and giving them that push to say, you can do this. That's it for me. Nice to meet you all.
Good morning. Of course, I'm Kelly Leo, Bag and Natural Resources Extension Agent. Sorry I came in late. You guys are really fast this morning. I was like, oh, I have plenty of time. I'm coming. So, anyway. All right, well, I, my same old story kind of every year. This time of year, I'm working on water testing. We have had a couple confirmed bad sources of livestock water. Thankfully, they hadn't turned in yet. But it did really change. Well, the one guy did turn in, but I did tell him get alternative water out there. So, hopefully, he got that done and saved some cows. The other guy did not turn in. The water was pretty bad. So, we're seeing really high levels of sulfates this year. Kind of off the chart, actually. So, I did talk to him about just finding some alternative sources. It's in a big wet area, so it just, the water's just bad. There's no two ways about it. He did, I told him, contact your vet if you're confused. But, but that's something that I think is one of the more important things that I do this time of year is we're watching for cyanobacteria. We're watching for high levels of TDS or dissolved solutes and sulfates are tend to be in, it's part of our geology here. It just tends to be a problem. And later in the summer here, when a lot of our water evaporates off. So, thankfully, we didn't have a real hot year, just for a few weeks there. So, also doing some forage testing right now. I've gotten a few calls for things like oat hay or and/or just baling up some weeds, things like that. We'll go out and do some, I'll pull samples, send those in, check for nitrate levels because it can reach toxic levels in livestock feed. This week is wheat samples and wheat midsoil survey. So, I'll be out in the field quite a bit this week, just gathering samples from different producers. We send those in. We get a quality assessment as far as what our durum and spring wheat are doing here in Williams County. I try to pick samples from all over the county. So, I try to grab people that I know, producers that I know from out throughout the county. And then, North Dakota Wheat Commission gives us that survey back. So, we can kinda give producers an estimate. Okay, here's what your year was like. Here's what our quality was like. Right now, we, quality's all over the map. Depends on what part of the county you're in. And we still have a lot of durum standing, not a lot of it. We still got a lot of stuff that needs to be harvested. I just finished up EcoEd days. I like to partner with the conservation district as much as I can. I did a, I always do farm safety with them. We had about six hundred youth, three days. It was pretty intense last week. Loved it. Lots of great kids. They get excited about PTO safety and grain bin safety and things like that. It's really important to me. And we talk to kids about that early so that they understand the dangers of working on a farm. It can even just be mowing their yard at home. So, I always tell them, it's not just about being on a farm. It's about being safe around equipment. We have Kids Egg Experience Day coming up, September twenty-fifth. So, I think Caitlin, Caitlin, Scott and I are all going to Minot. We help with this. It's for K through two kids from the Minot area. And so, they always have us come up and I always just present on seeds in North Dakota, let the kids touch the seeds. We talk about the products that they make, really tie them from agriculture into their food system. And so, I love it. And the kids get their hands dirty and they get to play with a lot of grains. So, I usually take about fifteen samples of things we grow right here in Williams County. I just run around and get stuff from producers. So, that's a good one. We're presenting to the homeschool groups this Friday, Caitlin and I, on the grains of our area and how they impact these kids' lives. So, I really think that's a great connection that Caitlin has made and brought me in on that. I presented a little bit to some of the homeschool groups in the past, but this is a neat one because they're gonna put us on their rotation now so that Extension is a part of their education throughout the year. So, it's awesome. Pesticide testing, I'm getting started already this fall. So, I do general pesticide recertification trainings. I'm required to do those. And so, I'll get started. I'll do a fall session in October to hopefully catch some of our snowbirds that head south and gives them a time to not panic about getting back by April first. We've been really busy with wheat show planning. We've got a really great speaker coming out of Canada this year. He was here a few years ago and he is back by popular request. I had so many people say, please get him back. So, we're gonna get Evan Schout back. He's gonna talk to us about the economics of farming right now. And even though he's Canadian, he's very in tune with the world economics. And so, he's a really great speaker. Last time we had him, the whole audience loved him. So, we're gonna get him back. A little different topic this time. He's, he's a pretty cool guy and he's very easy to work with and we're excited to get him back. We're also gonna try to get some of the Canadian durum researchers down here. They're working on a lot of things that we're not working on yet here. And so, I think we're gonna try to get at least one of their, their CD, their increase guys down here to talk about some of the things they're working on as far as traits. That takes a lot of my time, but the Wheat Show Board gives me topics and speaker suggestions and I follow up with them. And I'm trying to hand off a lot more of the, and honestly, it's been going pretty well. I think we're weaning down, weaning them down a little bit. Special Assignment Pizza. So, this is a North Dakota Farm Bureau program and we're all involved in that. Our whole office takes part in that. Farm Bureau provides the booths and we provide the speakers. And so, that'll be coming up November fifth and sixth. That used to be a Chamber Egg Committee function and they turned it over to Extension. We just, we're just used to organizing big things and lots of people and they were struggling with volunteers to get that done. So, our office has taken that over and we already have quite a few schools signed up. Kids go through stations, learn about the ingredients on a pizza and how that relates to North Dakota agriculture. The Western Beef Summit, I usually hold this every fall in coordination with four or five counties. Working on scheduling that. Last year, we focused on the fire recovery efforts. I went out this spring and we did a pasture walk on some of those fire areas as well, just to see what our recovery was after the fire. And now, this fall, we'll follow up with some suggestions and talk to producers about some of the after effects, what they saw in their cattle or if any. And what, you know, and then just add some more topics in there. We always try to do something that's pertinent to the current times. Marketplace for Kids, Caitlin and I, I believe, are presenting at that. I don't know. Scott, are you doing Marketplace? Okay, I think we're, we try to get our whole office involved. We each have things we can offer. And so, I'll, I'll talk to them about the seeds in North Dakota again and kinda work through that. I'm part of the Chamber Egg Committee. And in the 4H side of things, I took a big step back because now we have Scott. So, some of the things that I'm still involved with are the livestock side of things. Of course, Scott mentioned our judging team. We've got a big judging team and lots more kids are wanting to join in on that. We did really well last year for our first year. We had about sixteen kids that traveled with me all spring. And so, that was really awesome. And our team did well. Got a couple that are interested, maybe judging in the collegiate level. So, I'm trying to get them up to speed. And I'm working a little bit still with archery. Of course, we have a few volunteer leaders that are really meeting that, but our archery numbers are always good, anywhere from fifty on up. So, per year. And we work with the Bowman's Group at the fairgrounds and they allow us to use their facility. It's been working out pretty good. And then, finally, I'm hoping to attend the National 4H Youth Development Conference down in Atlanta, Georgia here, coming up in the end of October. I've been on that Western side rep for quite a few years now or been part of that for quite a few years. I've attended it every year and it's a great conference. So, I'll be coming back and visiting with you guys here and seeing if you're okay with me attending that this year. Other than that, I have a lot more, but this is just a quick brief of what's coming up. And there's lots. You guys get my quarter, our quarterly, so you know what we've been doing in the past. So, if you have any questions, you always feel free to reach out. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions before they go sit down? Thank you again. We appreciate the update. Okay. Dennis, you got eight minutes and forty seconds.
Just authorization to advertise to bid the graders, the plow truck. And tractors will come a little bit later, a week or two probably after, for the twenty-sixth budget.
How many graders is it?
Eight.
Eight. And we're just doing one plow truck or are we doing?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. What are the wishes?
I would make a motion to approve for advertising.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes. Motion carried.
Okay. The Alamo, seven miles, five miles on eleven and the two miles on twelve has been, the paving is complete. Now, it's clean up and of course, with all the moisture, it'll be a bit. And County Road eleven A, forty-two and eleven, they started paving yesterday. They're going wide open today, I'm sure. Other than that, we'll fill in in a couple more weeks, see where we're at. Lots of mix going now.
That's a good thing. I think everybody's tired of the construction. They're, they're ready to get done. It's, uh, it's been busy. Let's just put it that way.
The dust and the, and it was tore up. It was unfortunate, but it was tore up from one end to the other. It was tough to get through. It was rough. But they kept bouncing with the rains we had come through. Well, it was dry enough, so they'd move over here and then it was wet. Then they'd move up. So, it's, it's been quite a good project. Interesting. Okay? That's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it. Helen, we still got five minutes. Do you wanna start yours? Because I know we're not gonna probably make it. Good morning.
Good morning. All right, we can start with the position report. We have one corrections deputy position that we're looking for permission to fill, please.
I'd move to approve that position fulfillment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion, motion carried. Sorry. It's exactly what my daughter asked about. Why, what's, what's going on here?
I got a mic confused.
I heard the squealing.
All right, we have a number of contracts and agreements before you all maybe bundle them into, I'll bundle a few into a five-minute bunch or less. So, we are, as you know, purchasing the fairgrounds. There is a typically, a tool cat at the fairgrounds that is used by the hockey club and others to help the owner of the fairgrounds move snow. And it's also used to haul stuff around a little bit. It's through a municipal lease program through Bobcat. And so, you'll see that the, the fair board indicated to Ironhide that we would be taking over the property. And of course, there are some qualifiers to do this and I don't know the details of that. Keith has worked through it. You'll see that before we have the chairman sign this agreement, we need to change it. Somehow, it says Williams County Parks on that document and we'll want to change that to facilities. So, whether the chairman's able to sign that today with us just pinning it out or we have to get a new one, we'll have to sort through that. We have an IBALEI service agreement. That's through the Finance Department. IBALEI does our annual audit. This is, let's call it a base agreement. That will be in, in place for a number of years. And then, each year, there will be a financial component, a contract just for the financial piece. But I believe that Karen is working through the details of this. And so, I would be looking for permission for the chairman to sign it once the final edits have been approved by our attorney. We have a memorandum of understanding before you between us and School District Number Seven. It actually is on behalf of the Dispatch Center. And so, there could be situations in which some of the security cameras at the school would be useful to dispatch to be able to help direct our first responders. And this agreement allows for that, that use of those cameras. Of course, there's some technology involved in that, too. I think that you have a copy in your packet that has the school district's signature on it, maybe? No? Okay, okay. Yep, yep. We've, we've gone, we've gone through their attorney to get that sorted out.
They've signed it already?
I think they have.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, we have two expenditure-related items, maybe three, two. First, we have UPS. That's, so these are big batteries that support critical electronics, critical digital systems. And the Dispatch obviously operates off of electronic systems as their primary function. And our new director was informed that those batteries are, are in need of replacement. We did not budget for that purchase. And so, that is in part why this is in front of you. And, but Michelle's out of town and so, I'm here doing that on her behalf. So, it is roughly thirty-three thousand dollars to replace all of those batteries. We worked through her budget. She has funds in her budgets to make this purchase, but it wasn't. It's why the direction would have been for her to come here and present it, but I'm doing it on her behalf. Commissioner Hanson is her portfolio commissioner and I know that she talked this through with him as well. And then, our GIS system needs to go through, it's sort of a series of critical upgrades. And it's recommended that we use a consultant to help do that, just to make sure that we don't accidentally do something. Check a box that isn't supposed to be checked and then run into big trouble. And so, you'll, you'll see that there's a contract there with iCloud, iCloud point, Cloud Point, I think is what we call them. Those funds exist in the GIS budget. Uh, those funds exist in the GIS budget. However, I did not budget for this because I didn't know we were going to need a consultant for it at the time. We're working through the last details of that.
We're gonna have to stop you because I think we, we gotta go. So we're going to suspend this meeting. Um, is that what I say, Karen? Recess? All right. Okay. Uh, recess the commission meeting to attend the Upper Missouri District Health Unit meeting at this time. The September sixteenth, Williams County Board of Commissioners meeting. And we'll go back to Helen where we were at.
All right. We're working our way through the fairgrounds purchase. So we signed an initial, let's call it purchase agreement. We're working through a more detailed purchase agreement, uh, which I think I will bring back to this board for your review before the chairman signs, just because it lays out a number of the details about this, uh, grant that we've offered them. And I want to make sure you all are, are good with that before the chairman signs it. But then we, uh, Karen asked that we have the chairman, give the chairman permission to sign any purchase-related documents, actually land transfer-related documents that might come up between now and the final sale. So that would be a request before you today. And then we have two, that, so that isn't a document in your packet. That was just a note there on my agenda list to make.
Do you, do you want a motion on that now?
You could.
I think we'd just as soon do that now so we don't get lost in the shuffle here. We don't, we have good memories. They're just very short. What are the wishes of the board?
I'd make a motion to authorize chairman to sign you, purchase agreement as needed.
Purchase documents, probably.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call, Beth.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes. Motion carried.
All right. And then the last two documents, and I'm sorry, I wasn't in order here because I was trying to fit them into our timeline. They both relate to the Williston Square Turf and Ice Project. So Williams County holds the contract with Icon Architectural Group for the architect plans that will go into the ice and turf facility. But the, uh, park board, the Williston-Parksen Recreation District Board, at their meeting last Thursday, went through the process to affirm a CMAR will be used for the project and to create the CMAR selection committee. And part of what happens, just for all of the contractual and legal purposes, is that we need to draw some dotted lines between Williams County, who holds the contract for the architect and as part of our agreement, will continue to pay those bills out of our pledge, and the contract for the CMAR, which in the coming months, the park district will hold. And so you'll see that that JPA has been signed already by the park district last Thursday. And it in essence says that they are the owner of record, although we're going to continue to be involved in the project. And then the Icon Contract Amendment does the same kind of update with the Icon contract that we hold. So I could answer any questions about that, but just know we're, we're operating in a partnership. We're leveraging some of the county's experience in construction to help the park district along with that. And we're using some of our pledge to pay the, some of the, the early bills related to that project. The park district is executing a bond indenture, which will bring forward their funds for that project. But, but we had some, we had some early investment that they weren't able to pull off. So what I'm looking for is permission for the chairman to sign all of the documents that have been presented for you today. Or, and some of them may be, we're waiting on final work with Karen and, and whoever's attorney. And so it may not be today, but it'll be in the coming days. And then of course, those, those end up in the minutes once they're finalized.
Helen, I'm assuming that our legal counsel is poured over all these documents.
You've got that right, yeah.
Then I would move to authorize the chairman to sign these documents as presented by Helen today.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? The only thing I have is I have complete confidence that our legal has poured over these documents. And I get a roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. That's all I have for you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And seeing nothing further on our agenda, we are adjourned.